Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening.
It is now 6:00 PM on Tuesday, September 17th. I'd like to call our meeting to order. Madam Clerk, you take the role, please.
Brannum?
Here.
Pugh?
Here.
McBride?
Here.
Livingston?
Here.
Teresa?
Here.
Weaver?
Here.
Barron?
Here.
Walker?
Here.
Mackey?
Here.
English?
Present.
Newton?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Uh, next is our invocation. Councilwoman Barron, you're recognized.
Thank you. Let us pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for being with us all day long. We thank you for keeping us safe. We thank you, Lord God, for this opportunity to serve your people in this capacity. We invite you into this meeting and we ask you to have free course throughout this meeting. I thank you that we have sensible minds, sensible hearts, to do the people's business so that we make the decisions that are best for the citizens of Richland County. God, we thank you for those that are gathered here. And God, we play a special prayer for those that are, that, those that are homeless, those that are needy, and those that need more than some of the others. And we give you praise and we thank you for it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Let us stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is a presentation of resolutions. A resolution declaring September as South Carolina State Guard Month in Richland County. Because it's a resolution, we'll need to, uh, take a vote on it first before reading it. So I'll entertain them.
Well, Madam Chair.
Okay. Motion second, Madam Clerk.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Brannum?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you all for your unanimous support. Director O'Kane, you're recognized to read the resolution into the record.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A resolution recognizing the South Carolina State Guard. Whereas the South Carolina State Guard traces its earliest manifestation to the for- formation of the Charleston Militia in 1670, the colony's first military organization, protecting residents in earliest days from pirates, foreign invaders, and Native American raids. And whereas authorized by the South Carolina Code of Laws, the State Guard is a professional military organization and component of the South Carolina Military Department, which supports a variety of critical functions of the state, county, and municipal governments, such as providing disaster relief assistance to communities and local first responder organizations. And whereas September is observed as National Preparedness Month to raise awareness about the importance of preparing for emergencies and to build resilience before disaster strike. And whereas Richland County and municipalities throughout South Carolina have been affected by a variety of disasters and emergencies, including ice storms, flooding, earthquakes, hurricanes, and the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas the residents of Richland County deeply appreciate the protection that the South Carolina State Guard has provided to the citizens of this great state and to host of other services for more than 350 years. And whereas Richland County recognizes and honors the members of the South Carolina State Guard and commends their all-volunteer force who have boots on the ground during times of disaster, who share a passion for service and a strong commitment to their fellow South Carolinians and to embody the spirit of National Preparedness Month. Now therefore be it resolved that Richland County Council members Jason Brannum, Derek Pugh, Yvonne McBride, Paul Livingston, Allison Teresa, Don Weaver, Gretchen Barron, Overture Walker, Jessica Mackey, Cheryl English, and Shaquise Newton proudly recognize the members of the South Carolina State Guard for their exceptional contributions to Richland County and the great state of South Carolina and extend sincere gratitude for their assistance to our community.
Thank you. Do we have representative here from the Guard that would like to speak?
Members of council, on behalf of the men and women of the South Carolina State Guard and my council, thank you very much for recognizing the South Carolina State Guard. It is the longest-serving military organization in, in our state, uh, going back to 1670. Uh, we have soldiers throughout our state, but our main headquarters is located, our armory is located in Historic Olympia. It's a historical building and it's undergoing a $4.5 billion renovation. So we're gonna be here for a while. Uh, but, uh, as the resolution said, we're stand ready to respond whenever there's national disasters. We've done that. I think the biggest one was 2015 when we had the flood. The men and women, uh, activated very quickly and were able to support, uh, the local authorities, but also do what was necessary to protect our citizens. So on behalf of all the men and women of the State Guard, thank you very much for this resolution. We appreciate it and we stand trained and ready to serve you whenever you need us. Thank you.
Thank you. If you all would join us under the seal for a photo, please.
Run. One more?
Yeah. You can move that.
Okay. Please don't stay on the chair.
One, two, three. All right. One, two, three. Okay. I think it was good. Yeah, it's good. All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you all again for coming this evening. Next item on our agenda is approval of minutes from our special call meeting on September 10th, 2024.
I moved second.
The motion and a second to accept, uh, the minutes as presented. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brannum?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next is adoption of the agenda. Administrator Brown, do you have any additions or deletions this evening?
Uh, there is an item that I'm aware of, Madam Chair, uh, but I believe that, uh, it is gonna be addressed by our maker of the motion.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
You recognize Ms. Newton?
I moved to approve the agenda, but to remove item 16A, the second reading item for a quitclaim deed. Since the original motion was passed, our legal team and public works team determined that they did not need to do a quitclaims deed, but rather that they could simply terminate the easement. And that was done on Monday by Administrator Brown, so this item is not needed. So again, I moved to approve the agenda with the removal of item 16A.
That good? A motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented, but to remove 16A. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brannum?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Next is item seven, report of the attorney for executive session items. Attorney Wright, you're recognized.
Yes, Madam Chair. We have five items for executive session. 7A, Alvinas Clinic Detention Center update. 7B, tourism development fee. 7C, personnel matter. 7D, property inquiry, northeast South Likes Lane. And 7E, property inquiry, 1070 Coffin Road North. Uh, all of them are pursuant to, uh, code section 30 dash 4 dash 70A2, uh, with the exception of C, which is pursuant to 30 dash 4 dash 70A1. And there are no outside counsel for the any matters.
Thank you. So per council rules, uh, all these items will be taken up at our executive session at the end of the meeting. Next is item eight, citizens input for items on the agenda not requiring a public hearing. Vice Chair Pugh, do we have anyone sign up to speak this evening?
Yes, ma'am, we do. We have one person sign up to speak, that's Mr. Bill Ellen. Mr. Ellen, if you can come up to the podium, state your name and your address, and you have two minutes to speak, sir.
Thank you, councilman, and thank you, Madam Chair and all members of, of council. My name is Bill Ellen. Uh, address 1101 Lincoln Street, Columbia, 29201. Um, I'm president and CEO of the Columbia Convention Center, and I'm here tonight just to, uh, as we move into our new physical year, to thank this council for your support going forward for our next year and to thank you for your past support. Without it, uh, it would not be possible to do the things we do. Uh, we, last night was a big night for us. We celebrated, we're in the process of celebrating our 20-year anniversary of the Columbia Convention Center being open. And we had a nice reception event last night, well-attended by this council. And I sincerely thank each of you that were there last night. Um, I hope you enjoyed it. We appreciate it. It meant a lot for you to be there. And, uh, the building has been successful for 20 years. We provided convention and conference services, banquet services, meeting services for not only citizens of Richland County, but, uh, citizens across our state and people throughout the southeast regional. And, uh, we thank you for your support to make all is possible the last 20 years. We look forward to the next 20 years of success and appreciate all you do with your support, and we look forward to the future. So thank each of you sincerely. I appreciate it very much.
Madam Chair, that concludes everyone that signed up to speak for that item.
Next is item nine, citizens input must pertain to Richland County matters not on the agenda. Items for which a public hearing is required or a public hearing has been scheduled cannot be addressed at this time. Vice Chair Pugh, anyone sign up to speak?
Yes, ma'am, we have two people that signed up to speak. The first one is Ms. Crystal Williams. Ms. Williams, if you can come to the podium, state your name and your address for the record, and you have two minutes to speak, ma'am.
I'm Crystal Williams, address 2205 Main Street, Columbia, South Carolina, 29201. Um, I first want to say thank you all for everything that you do in your service to this county. I do want to bring something to your attention, um, some of you may know, and also the public's attention, um, since our campaign year is in full effect. We have a campaign manager that is a president of a Richland County Neighborhood Council. So he is essentially the president of all the neighborhood presidents in Richland County. Just because it's allowed in local government does not mean that this system is not corrupt. He is in contracts that, and he is being paid thousands of dollars and tens of thousands of dollars by politicians, and he is the president of this organization that is sponsored by you all, Richland County. In his role as a campaign manager, he naturally endorses who? His clients that are in contracts with him. This campaign manager does not provide community information to people like candidates like myself. It's only for his clients. So if he is the president of a neighborhood organization that's sponsored by you all, he's in a role to where he has access to information and he is able to help his clients. I just ran a race for county council earlier this year, and that happened. I was running against someone when I would show up at community meetings. My opponent's campaign material would be all over the tables. I would come in, either couldn't speak, had 60 seconds to speak, or had neighborhoods that would not even invite me to their meetings. And most of the time when I was pulling up, my opponent was walking out. Who was this person's campaign manager? The same campaign manager that's running this county organization that you all are sponsoring. My time is up. We shouldn't have a campaign manager that is, is running politicians' campaigns and he is leading a 501(c)(501) that's sponsored by you all.
Ms. Williams, that's your time.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, we have one more person sign up to speak. Speak is Anna Heron. Ms. Heron, if you can state your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes to speak, ma'am.
Hey, um, Anna Heron, 21 Oakley Court, 29016 Whitewood. Um, I have a few things. Um, the age tax and the aid tax, hospitality and accommodations tax. I didn't, I came here last week and talked about the motion about, um, using the 15% of accommodations tax to put towards down payment assistance for county employees. Um, I didn't know at the time that it, the state law says you can use it for roads. Um, and, and also you can use the hospitality tax for roads too. So I'm having difficulty understanding why we need the penny tax. Um, I know that's way more money than those two taxes, but, um, it, it just doesn't, I just don't understand. Um, and then, um, about the thing I said about, um, the meeting, the meeting, or the, um, what am I saying? Um, oh, the, uh, ag- the agenda minutes say I have difficulty, I guess, keeping up with the meetings. I don't really have difficulty. I'll do a good job of advertising. Um, I was just saying that there's a lot of meetings going on and it's just hard to go to them and keep up with, with what's going on. Um, so, yeah, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. Madam Chair, that's all that signed up to speak for that item.
Thank you. Next item 10, report of the county administrator. Administrator Brown, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of council, I have two items, uh, I'd like to bring to your attention under general updates. Uh, one, uh, is related to our strategic plan. Um, as I mentioned prior to, uh, tonight, one of our six strategic goals is operational excellence. And part of those initiatives included action, uh, that the county council thought was important for us to develop metrics, uh, to provide a dashboard, and to also, um, invest in our employees to understand how we could be better and serve better so that we can ultimately serve the citizens better. Uh, and so we have, uh, an employee survey, it's basically called a climate survey that's been put out. Uh, that survey is open to October 4th, so we want to encourage all employees, uh, to take their surveys, about a five-minute survey. Um, please don't be concerned that people will see your name or anything like that. It is a anonymous survey. Uh, we want you to provide your feedback. We want to identify our strengths, uh, as well as areas of improvement so that we as leadership can serve you better. So please, just want to take this opportunity, uh, as a part of our strategic initiative to encourage employees to participate in that climate survey so we can figure out how we can be better, uh, in serving our employees so they can better serve the citizens. Uh, the second item, uh, is relative to the comprehensive planning process uh, that we talked about was coming up. I want to give you just a brief update, uh, and then going forward, you will be hearing more information. Uh, but the community planning development staff had an introductory meeting with a consultant that's gonna be kind of leading this process for the comprehensive plan. Uh, the plan will be created in three phases. Phase one will be the discovery. Phase two will be land use and review, and phase three will be direction, documentation, and an action plan. Uh, I wanted you to know that the staff have a meeting that's coordinated with a consultant that should be happening on Monday, uh, to discuss citizen outreach, which includes the formation of an advisory committee, uh, and identifying key stakeholders to interview. And as a result of this, you'll be receiving some information, and we're gonna want you to provide any feedback on members of the community that you would like to be a part of this advisory committee. Certainly, all citizens' input's gonna be welcome. But as we talked about in the past, we want to engage you early on and make sure that you have an opportunity to identify, uh, key stakeholders, uh, that could help through this process. Uh, so Madam Chair, members of council, that concludes my report. We'll certainly take any questions, uh, that you may have about any of that information.
Have any?
Thank you.
Next is item 11, report of the clerk of council. Madam Clerk, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to remind the public that there are several town hall meetings that have been scheduled to discuss, uh, the penny, but also to open opportunities for other, um, rezoning input that are happening in different districts. On September the 19th, District 11 will be holding a town hall meeting at 6 o'clock at the Gardner's Ferry Adult Activity Center. Um, on September the 23rd, District 10 will be holding a town hall meeting at the Black Road Park at 6 o'clock. On, uh, September the 26th, District 2 and 7 will be holding a town hall meeting at Doc O'Manor at 6 o'clock. And a public hearing is also scheduled for this item on October the 15th here in council chambers, which will start at 3:30 PM. Um, on, uh, October 21st, District 1 is holding a town hall meeting at the Friars Gate Park at 6 o'clock. And on October 24th, District 8 and 9 will be holding a town hall meeting at the R2R2 Conference Center. There are other town hall meetings that are being scheduled. Once we have confirmed the location and the time, it will be announced, and they will be for District 3 and 7 and others that are coming. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Next is item 12, report of the chair. I do not have anything this evening. Item 13, open and closed public hearings. An ordinance authorizing easement to Dominion Energy, South Carolina, Inc. for the installation, operation, and maintenance of D E S C facilities at 1403 Jim Hamilton Boulevard, Richland County, TMS number 13702-01-30. This public hearing is now open. Vice Chair Pugh?
Madam Chair, no one signed up to speak?
Thank you. This public hearing is now closed. Next is item 14, approval of consent items. 14A, an ordinance authorizing easement to Dominion Energy, South Carolina, Inc. for the installation, operation, and maintenance of D E S C facilities at 1403 Jim Hamilton Boulevard, Richland County, TMS number 13702-01-30. This is third reading of this item. I will entertain a motion.
So move, Madam Chair.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion? Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Madam Chair?
Teresa?
A motion reconsideration?
Second.
Motion is second. Madam Clerk?
Brannum?
No.
Pugh?
No.
McBride?
No.
Livingston?
No.
Teresa?
No.
Weaver?
No.
Barron?
No.
Walker? Mackey?
No.
English?
No.
Newton?
No.
Motion fails.
Thank you. Next item 15, third reading items. 15A is case number 24-014MA Eric Norton RT to MU1, 2.6 acres. 1301 Three Dog Road at Dutch Fork Road, TMS number R01507-02-03 and R01507-02-04. This is in District 1 and is a third reading item.
Madam Chair?
You're recognized.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brannum?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Walker? Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Madam Chair?
Recognized.
Move to reconsider.
Second.
Motion is second for reconsideration. Madam Clerk?
Brannum?
No.
Pugh?
No.
McBride?
No.
Livingston?
No.
Teresa?
No.
Weaver?
No.
Barron?
No.
Walker? Mackey?
No.
English?
No.
Newton?
No.
Motion fails.
Next is item 17, report of rules and appointments committee. Councilwoman Barron, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have several appointments that we'd like to make recommendation to full council. The first appointment is for the Board of Zoning Appeals. We had one vacancy. Uh, we did interview, uh, several applicants. However, uh, it is the rec- the committee recommends to re-advertise this vacancy.
Ms. Barron, would you like a vote on this, or are you going through one by one?
I'm gonna go through them one by one.
You've heard the committee, uh,'s recommendation to re-advertise? Because the committee doesn't need a second, is there any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Recognize, Ms. Barron?
Our next appointment is for the Building Codes Board of Appeals. There were seven vacancies. The committee recommends for re-advertising for the vacancies.
Per the committee's recommendation? Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brannum?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Here.
Our next appointments are for the Community Relations Council for vacancies. Community Relations Council for vacancies. The committee recommends appointing Terrence Rickenbacher, Ashley McCall, Anthony Stovall, and Amanda Rice.
You've heard the committee's recommendations? Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Herron?
Our next appointment is for the Employee Grievance Committee. There was one vacancy. It was for the incumbent, and the committee recommends re-appointing Cal Hughes.
Per the committee's recommendation, any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa? Weaver?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Herron?
Baron?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Recognize, Ms. Baron.
Our next appointment is for the Midlands Workforce Development Board. We had one vacancy. The committee recommends appointing Lauren Holland.
You've heard the committee's recommendation. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston? Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton? Motion approved.
Herron, you're recognized.
Our final appointment is for the Township Auditorium. We had one vacancy. The committee recommends appointing Veronica Goodwin.
You've heard the committee's recommendation? Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston? Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Herron?
Uh, and one final plea to council members and to the public as a whole. We do have applications that are available, uh, for vacancies of our boards and commissions, uh, that are out now. Please, we want you to get engaged in this process. You can do so by applying, by going on our website to apply. Um, you'd notice that we have had to re-advertise for several boards, and anytime that we have vacancies that we can't fill, that means that these boards and commissions cannot meet because they do not, they, they can't have a quorum. So it's important, whilst we have, um, filled the majority of our, uh, vacancies, we do still have some of those boards that are a little more difficult to fill. So if you will, please, as you're out in the community, speaking with your constituents, or for those that are here in the building or online, please, uh, take a look at those vacancies and see if you want to engage into this process. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
All right, is this related to her report?
It is.
Okay, go ahead.
A quick question. The positions that we're re-advertising, will those be advertised in October or part of the current advertising now?
They're, they're part of this current advertisement. So those that we are re-advertising, we looped those in last week during our meeting, um, and that was a part of my report. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, Ms. Baron, that concludes your report?
It does, yes.
Thank you. Next is item eighteen, report of the Transportation Ad Hoc Committee. Councilman Walker, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, this is the award of construction, uh, construction contract, rather, for Atlas Road widening, Phase one A. Uh, the committee recommends awarding the construction contract to Mcclaim and Associates, Inc., based on the bid received at the amount of seven million, nine hundred and forty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars and fifty cents, with a fifteen percent construction contingency, for a total of nine million, one hundred and thirty-six thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents. Uh, Phase one A represents our utility relocation, and so this does not, uh, pertain to the construction, uh, you know, of the road widening, but rather just utility relocation. And so, uh, that is the recommendation of the committee.
You've heard the committee's recommendation. It does not require a second. Is there any discussion? You're recognized, Councilman Weaver.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Mr. Brown, I do have one question. Is this the contractor that was appealing? That he did not get the bid? Am I, am I getting it confused on the different contractors?
No, sir. This was the contractor that deal appeal, uh, and his appeal, um, was denied. The, uh, Office of Small Business's determination uh, was upheld in accordance with Chapter two, uh, of the county code.
Okay. I, I just have one, one thing to say. Um, part of this contractor's, um, grief, if you will, with the county, was that the, uh, contractor, subcontractors that he tried to contact, many, he couldn't reach.
Point of order?
So...
You recognize, Ms. Newton?
Uh, I, I guess I'm, I'm looking to our attorney because it seems like we're talking about a contractual matter here on the dais, and I just wanted to pause, um, in case that was correct.
Right. I, I think that this would be an issue that would, uh, be appropriate for executive session if you needed to discuss it. Uh, because it, it would be a potential legal matter.
Thank you, Attorney Wright. You still have the, I'm sorry, Ms. Newton, that cleared your point of order? Yes, thank you.
Yes, it is a contractual.
Uh, Councilman Weaver, did you have anything else you'd like to say, not related to that?
No, but I, I, well, let me say one more thing.
Yes.
So I did my own research and sent my own letters out to these subcontractors, and I would like for council to hear at a later date what the result of that is, because I think this gentleman might have a valid point based on the communication that I received.
Mr. Weaver?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston? Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
No.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Madam Chair?
Recognize.
That concludes the report of the Transportation Ad Hoc Committee.
Does that need to be re- Move to reconsider?
Second.
Motion is second for reconsideration. Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
No.
Pew?
No.
McBride?
No.
Livingston?
No.
Teresa?
No.
Weaver?
No.
Baron?
No.
Walker?
No.
Mackey?
No.
English?
No.
Newton?
No.
Motion fails.
Uh, next, item nineteen, other items. Nineteen A, fiscal year twenty-five, District seven, hostility tax allocations.
Move to approve.
Motion is second. Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston? Teresa? Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Madam Chair?
Recognize.
Motion for reconsideration?
Second.
Motion is second for reconsideration? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
No.
Pew?
No.
McBride?
No.
Livingston? Teresa?
No.
Weaver?
No.
Baron?
No.
Walker?
No.
Mackey?
No.
English?
No.
Newton?
No.
Motion fails.
Thank you. We're now at item twenty, executive session. Um, Attorney Wright, if you would, for the record, read your items again. Please.
Yes, Madam Chair. There are five items, Alvin Esalen Detention Center, A, B, Tourism Development Fee, C Personnel Matter, Grievance Reviews and Reconclusions, D Property Inquiry, Northeast South Lake Likes Lane, and E Property Inquiry, Ten Seventy Kaufman Road North.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss these items. The motion is second. Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston? Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
We're now in executive session. Thank you.
Recording stopped.
entertain the motion?
so moved.
recording in progress.
motion is second come my executive session madam clerk.
Brannham?
yes.
Pugh?
yes.
McBride?
yes.
Livingston?
yes.
Teresha?
yes.
Weaver?
yes.
Barron?
yes.
Walker?
yes.
Mackey?
yes.
English?
yes.
Newton?
yes.
motion approved.
Adam chair.
you recognize?
as to item seven E. so point of clarification, Mr. Administrator. the property that we just discussed is it as to seven E on the agenda?
yes sir, I believe that's the correct one.
one zero seven zero Kaufman Road?
thought it was D.
I was thinking it was D as in David.
that could be correct sir.
all right, all right, I'll make my motion.
from our mistake.
sure. as to item seven D move to authorize the administrator proceed with obtaining an appraisal as to the property.
motion is second in discussion. Madam clerk?
yes.
Pugh?
yes.
McBride? Livingston?
yes.
Teresha?
this is D, S, sorry.
Weaver?
yes.
Barron?
yes.
Walker?
yes.
Mackey?
yes.
English?
yes.
Newton?
yes.
motion approved.
thank you.
Adam chair, I have a motion when you're ready.
you recognize Councilman Weaver?
thank you, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the county administrator to enter negotiations in reference to seven B. the tourism development fee as was discussed in the executive session.
acting.
motion is second. Madam clerk?
Brannham?
yes.
Pugh?
yes.
McBride? Livingston?
yes.
Teresha?
O.
Weaver?
yes.
Barron?
O.
Walker?
yes.
Mackey?
yes.
English?
yes.
Newton?
yes.
motion approved.
thank you. all right next, item twenty one motion period. we have one motion this evening received by the Honorable Allison Teresha. I move that the administrator explore the possibility and present a draft ordinance to place a moratorium on demolition and new construction in the Olympia area of Richland County. I'll send this motion to DNS committee. for item number twenty two adjournment?
I'll move.
second.
motion second, Madam clerk?
Brannham?
yes.
Pugh?
yes.
McBride?
yes.
Livingston?
yes.
Teresha?
S.
Weaver?
yes.
Barron?
yes.
Walker?
yes.
Mackey?
yes.
English?
yes.
Newton?
yes.
motion approved.
if you adjourn, thank you.